Right, good afternoon, everybody. I'm gonna call this regular reading of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order, and we're gonna start with our roll call from our clerk, clerk Cardale.
Alright, thank you, Madam Vice President. President Raymond is not with us today. Vice President Taylor.
I'm here.
I am here. Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Minneto.
Here.
Alright, Madam Vice President, we have quorum.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Let's, I'll stand and we can do the, uh, pledge allegiance together. I'll get us going. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, thank you, everybody. And just as a reminder to those who are watching on YouTube, if you have public comments to make during this meeting, you can send those public comments to publiccomments@washoeschools.net. And also as a reminder, due to their current state of emergency declared by the governor because of the COVID-19 virus, and more specifically Governor's Directive 021, the Board of Trustees will receive public comment via email only. Those wishing to make public comments should email their public comments to the board clerk@publiccomments@washoeschools.net. And then all public comments received before and during the meeting will be forwarded to the Board of Trustees for their consideration. And any public comments, all public comments, I should say, will be included in the public record as minutes, but will not be read aloud during the meeting. Again, will not be read aloud during the meeting. In order to comply with Nevada revised statutes, IRS, Chapter 241, the open meeting law, and on the advice of legal counsel, the Board is precluded from deliberating or acting on items based upon public comment, which are not already on the agenda. So again, I know there was much conversation and concern regarding reopening of school. Those are not items on today's agenda. The agenda had already been posted before our current events happened and were carried by the media. However, the intention of setting the school calendar as we did as a Board allows us the opportunity to consider anything in that vein at our next meeting, which is next week. Tuesday, July 28th, we will consider any, any other items that we think are appropriate for the agenda, and that will include any final decisions regarding the reopening of school. That is at our next meeting, so you will not hear those on today's agendas. Not because we don't hear you, but it's because they're not on the agenda. Okay, that being said, then we're gonna go right to our first, our first item is our action to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Simon Holland. Second?
Second.
There's a second by trustee Cardale. Any, any discussion? Anyone? Alright, seeing none. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposition? Okay, the motion has carried. The motion has carried, and now we're on to agenda item two, consent agenda items. Just as a reminder to the public, these are items that are considered, considered freely routine, and therefore may be considered as a whole, and that's what we'll do so, uh, we'll do so at this moment unless any trustees, any of my colleagues would like to pull an agenda, consent agenda item for individual consideration. If not, I will entertain the motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, trustee Simon Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Minneto. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Alright, the motion has carried, and thank you all for unmuting yourselves. I typically forget to do that when I vote myself, so thank you. Now it's our first opportunity, our first call for, um, uh, public comment. Oh, I should have taken public comment on the consent. Were there any public comments, JJ, on the consent agenda? I didn't see any prior, but I wanted to.
No.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for bailing me out on that. Now we're to our public comment agenda, um, item. And again, any public comments that were received prior to or during the meeting, we will take, we have reviewed those prior, and boy, there were many, and continue to be many. You're keeping us busy. Uh, the trustees are reviewing those, and they will all be made, um, a part of the public record. Even those that come in during the meeting will be made a part of the public record. So JJ, at this time, do we have any public comment that are not pertaining to a specific agenda item?
Yes, we do.
Remind.
Public comments from Brian Neff, Mashawn Gary, Jennifer Stark, Dorothy Nude, Sherry Koppel, Daisy Buchanan, Dean, Kelly Roper, Magdalena Albright, Mari Pimnital, Rachel Fisher, Liz Leppe, Lori Newman, Carly Humison, Mary Culpepper, Methany Avril, Amal Singer, John Devaney, Will Harper, Julie Dowell, Casey Bussek, Amy Bento, Patty Nelson, Jeff Church, Kirsty Holmes, Empower Nevada Teachers, Tanya Darnell, Amy Gonzalez, a letter submitted by the Washoe Education Association, Washoe Schools Principals Association, and Washoe Education Support Professionals, Kathleen Bath, Carrie Woodhead, Brandon Siri, Jaturna Kalaris, Shannon Manning, Kimmy, Amanda Jones, Megan Franklin, Matt Tate, Krista Rossi, Rebecca Cronin, Dr. William Toledo, Clinton Toledo, Mill Holland, Catherine Shai, Kathy Zarker, Pat Arnott, Peyton Lane, Monica Dutchover, Vicki Foley, Zach Woodhead, Kathy Howard, Karen Devlin, Amber Alfaro, Jeff Smith, Danielle McIntosh, Jennifer Mengington, Stacy Malkulin, Shannon Spersky, Dr. Eric Dunn, Matthew Hers, Kendrick Ratcher, Erin Crenz, Shelley Coet, Andy Guzman, Rene Becker, Jill Rogers, Lauren Zimmerman, Ed Perez, Peter Luciers, Gail Hart, Jessica Gray, Rick Sue, Allison Benesh, Carrie Howard, Elaine Kudnick, Alexander Givon, Maggie Bab, Kristen DeHahn, Tara Jones, Suzanne Lewis, Jeremy Murray, Bradford Backlund, Ryan Small, Jamie Stewart, Jerry Fulgham, and Maureen Boyer. That is all for this item.
Thank you very much, and I will draw, uh, call to the attention of my colleagues. There were two public comments that came in since the beginning of the meeting, and I took that time while doing the reading of the names to read those comments, and hopefully you've done the same, so that we can make sure that we are indeed reading these comments, and we appreciate, uh, the public understanding that they can't come meet with us in person, not yet. But as, as also, I will say this, as indicated by the statement, um, released by our president, President Malina Raymond, we will, uh, when the opening of schools occurs, we will also begin to meet in person again, and make sure that we're adhering to those guidelines by, by the governor. Okay, thank you very much. And now we'll go on to agenda item number four. Agenda item 4.01, this is the presentation and discussion about legislative and fiscal implications as related to the special session, special legislative session and state budget. This is for information and discussion only, and we have our presenters who have magically appeared on our screen, the magic of technology. And so we're glad to have our Government Affairs Director, who's been doing nothing for these last couple of weeks, but sitting around, you know, twiddling her thumbs, Lindsey Anderson, Mark Mathers, our CFO and our Budget Director, none other than Mr. Mike Shorter. Thank you so much. Update us. They barely finished in time for our meeting.
Thank you, Vice President Taylor, Trustee Superintendent McNeil. Thank you for having us today, fresh off the, uh, special legislative session in Carson City. As you mentioned, I'm Lindsey Anderson, Director of Government Affairs, and I'm joined by our CFO, Mark Mathers. We're gonna put up a couple of slides here. We have about 10 slides to go through pretty quick. Now, let's see here. And, uh, we will answer questions at the end. Um, so we just finished 12 days of a special legislative session, the 31st special session. As you know, there was a budget deficit of about $1.2 billion for FY21 that the legislature was asked to address by the governor, went approximately 12 days and lots of late nights. And ultimately, the governor has signed five bills into law. The primary purpose of these pieces of legislation was around the budget, so you can see here a list of things that were done to address that budget deficit. I won't read them to you, but nobody in that building took any pleasure in going through these cuts.
Uh, Lindsey, I'm gonna stop you for a moment. Um, we don't see the slides.
Oh dear. Well, that's not gonna work. Let me see here.
JJ, would you be able to put up the, the slide presentation for Lindsey, and then she can just tell you, and Mark and Mike can just tell you to, to move the slides?
Still no.
JJ has started screen sharing. We have that. No, there's not, no slides as of yet. Then we are, we have slides now. Thank you.
Alright, uh, well, we'll go on to the third slide, JJ. Please, thank you. Sorry about the technical issues there. Uh, I wanna start with the good news, um, for the Board to consider. Several programs around education were left fully funded from the last legislative session with the primary account being the distributive school account, and that's our per pupil funding that funds every student in this state. And certainly, Dr. McNeil can chime in, but early on, the superintendents got together and agreed that this was a primary priority for districts across the state. We knew we were gonna have to make some cuts, but preserving the distributive school account was the number one priority, and that was accomplished even through the end of the legislative session. Additionally, Zoom schools, which serve our English language learners, Victory Schools, which are some of the poorest schools in our district, and our special education funds were also preserved, so no cuts to those programs. Late in the legislative session, the Teach Nevada Scholarship, Financial Literacy and Computer Science Funds were also restored, uh, to the education budget. Next slide, JJ. Thank you. Unfortunately, we knew we were gonna have to eliminate some programming, so the Read by Grade 3 Initiative was defunded completely. The New Nevada Education Funding Formula, which we commonly refer to as SB 178 funds, which are distributed on a per pupil basis down to the school level, those were cut entirely. The Turnaround Schools Grant and the Teacher Supply Reimbursement Funds were also eliminated. You'll see an asterisk on the first two bullets. There are $50 million worth of CARES funds, which were earmarked specifically for education, and these two programs were explicitly called out in the legislation as priorities for those funds and for any additional federal funds that may come to the state of Nevada as a result of federal legislation. So these were very difficult and painful decisions that the legislature had to make. Nobody took pleasure in eliminating these programs, but we are hoping to be able to restore some of those funds, assuming additional federal dollars come our way. Next slide, please. There were a handful of programs that were partially cut. Gifted and Talented Education was one of those at the last second that we weren't expecting to read, to have a reduction in funds was reduced by about 60%. Some school safety funding from the last legislative session, our school police enhancement, some infrastructure funds, social-emotional, and some of the bullying grant programs were also partially reduced or fully, in some cases, fully eliminated. College and Career Readiness and Diploma Incentives, teacher incentives, the RPDP program and Pre-K also partially cut. I forgot to mention early on, there's an additional attachment in Board Docs that has a full list, including each amount for each program, uh, that you'll see. I think it's called the AB3 Fiscal Note, so you can refer to that document for line item list and a dollar amount for what we estimate for the Washoe County School District in terms of impact. Next slide, please. Mark, I think I'm gonna turn it over to you here.
Great. Thanks, Lindsey. Mark Mathers, CFO, for the record. So in addition to those eliminations and reductions, there were a couple of categories of funding to K through 12, where school districts made savings previously, and so those savings, or what the state calls reversions, also partially helped meet its $1.2 billion target for reductions. The class size reduction in supplemental CSR program was one of those programs. $12 million in savings were identified for fiscal year '20, and then there was a calculation error by the state that included charter schools in the amount funded for fiscal year '21. That was corrected, and so that was an additional $6 million of savings. So in total, there are, there was $18 million of CSR class size reduction savings that should not impact Washoe County School District or any other school district in the state. These were either just unused monies, or, um, or again, a miscalculation by the state on what needed to be funded for fiscal year '21. And then SB 551 and 8309 were too.
Mr. Mathers, I'm sorry, Mark, I'm gonna interrupt you for just a moment. I see trustee Simon Holland has a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Mark. Um, I just wanna make sure I understand that correctly, because we use those class size reduction and supplemental class size reduction funds to provide for teachers to make our class sizes compliant. So you're saying there is no impact to the Washoe County School District from those cuts? I just wanna make sure I'm clear on that.
You are correct, trustee Simon Holland. Those really aren't cuts. Those are just identified savings or unused monies.
Okay. Well, that's good news. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then similarly, for Senate Bill 551 and Assembly Bill 309 block grants, a number of districts had identified savings. We did not. But a number of districts did not spend their whole allocation of those monies in fiscal year '20, and so those savings were also identified. It was a little over $1 million. That again goes to plug the $1.2 billion shortfall. Next slide, please. So as Lindsey mentioned, Attachment C in your Board Docs packet includes a complete rundown of the estimated impact to Washoe County School District. These are only estimates at this time. We don't yet have confirmation from the Department of Education, but these are estimates that Mike and his team and, and I put together this weekend and on Friday, based on the various amendments to Assembly Bill 3. As you can see from Attachment C, and I don't know, you know, if JJ can pop up Attachment C at all. I'm catching her off guard, but I, I can go through it. The major changes that, that you can see again are the elimination of the Read by Grade 3 program, which for us means a loss of more than $5 million in 44 and a half full-time equivalent positions. College and Career Readiness saw cuts of $370,000 approximately, which is two full-time equivalents. The SB 178 program, our share of that reduction is just under $5 million, and most of that is non-personnel costs, but it does mean a estimated reduction of five and a half full-time equivalent positions. Then there are, for Social and Emotional Learning, four reduced full-time equivalent positions and reduced funding of more than $500,000. And then lastly, as Lindsey mentioned, kind of a late-breaking change, uh, an amendment we saw was reductions to the, to Gifted and Talented Program statewide. Our share of those reductions is estimated to be $1.2 million, and that equates to 15 full-time equivalent positions. I think JJ's now, nope. It's okay, JJ. We can, we can just stick with this PowerPoint. There we go. So, you know, those are significant impacts, obviously, that we face. We'll talk about how we plan to mitigate those cuts in, in a couple of slides. As Lindsey also mentioned, there was an amendment to AB3 the last few days of the special session that allocated $50 million of the state's CARES Act funds to K through 12. These are monies that are required to be spent by December 30th, 2020, so just for the first half of the fiscal year, or else they have to be returned to the federal government. We are awaiting word on what our allocation will be and kind of the parameters for that funding. Roughly, we estimate perhaps $5 to $7 million of that $50 million. Obviously, help as well. And then last bullet point, we earlier received an allocation of CARES Act ESTER monies, and that amounted to a little over $9 million after we allocate funding to private schools and charter schools. And so obviously, that helps as well to mitigate, mitigate those reductions. Onto slide A.
Mark, if I may, while the slides are changed, um, so in, in those areas where we've lost FTE, right, in those areas where we've lost FTE, um, are those employees that we now reassign, or they get overaged, or, or do we have openings in those areas that we can, how do we mitigate that? And not, and not have people lose their jobs?
Yeah, well, um, we can talk about it more in slide nine, but it will be a combination of placing those affected employees in vacant positions and a combination of backfilling lost revenue with CARES Act monies. So no, none of the 71 positions that are outlined on Attachment C, do we foresee even coming close to having to, um, lay off? And so all of those positions will be, all of those, sorry, I should say incumbents, personnel in those positions will find a position listed.
Thank you.
So I'll jump in here real quick, and then, um, Mark and I will kind of trade off. But clearly, the distributive school account and K-12 education was a priority for policymakers and the governor to not even be included in the original proposal or included from the legislature. When you consider, you know, K-12 is, you know, a significant portion of the state's budget, and our, our portion of the reduction was about 10%, really, education, um, was a priority for our lawmakers, and we are grateful for that. As Mark mentioned, the federal funds are playing a key role in the short term, but obviously, those are, we cannot count on those funds long-term. And depending on how our economic recovery goes, how quickly it comes back before we can see these state revenues restored, um, I think there are plenty of questions to be had. You may also have seen that the governor issued a statement about a potential second session and, um, letting legislature, legislators go home for a little bit before he reconvenes them. We don't expect major fiscal impacts in the second special session that's been discussed, but more emphasis on policy issues like criminal justice reform and election reform. Next slide, please.
So now to kind of address those 71 positions. Again, we received a allocation of CARES Act money several months ago. We still have to apply for the grant, but it's not a competitive grant. And again, our share of those monies is roughly $9.2 million. That will allow us to restore funding for a large segment of the reduced positions that we went over several slides ago. There are also competitive CARES Act grant applications that are available to us, for instance, for wraparound services for professional development. And so we will apply for those monies to help backfill the reductions that we went over. The second bullet point, um, you'll remember that we came to you and talked about holding vacancies, which we have, and we talked about holding vacant certified positions to external hiring. So we have not made external hires, hires for certified positions just based on this scenario. And so there are many unfilled certified positions that, for instance, we plan to use for the 44 and a half, um, literacy specialist positions that are eliminated when the Read by Grade 3 position, uh, program was eliminated. And also, you know, lastly, as we talked about, once we know what our allocation of that $50 million of CARES Act monies that must be spent by December 30th, that will also help at least for half of a year. And I look at it as kind of a matching grant. The state will cover the positions for the first half of the year, and then we would need to, to cover the cost of those positions for the second half of the year. So that's, again, a new source of funding that we can use to mitigate and offset these lost positions. So I think in the coming days, in fact, I think for next week's board meeting, you will see a grant application for the ESRS money. We are, because we just got word of these various changes to Assembly Bill 3, we are talking right now about some tweaks to that grant application. But in, uh, again, in conclusion, um, we have, uh, places for all of the affected personnel in these positions, and for many of these positions, those positions will be saved through CARES Act monies in one fashion or another. So, um, it could certainly be a lot worse, as I think Lindsey kind of indicated in the slide before.
Thank you, Mark, and, and I will say on that point that we certainly want to, just on behalf of the, the Board and, and the district, just express our deep appreciation for, um, K-12 being such a high priority during a time when a $1.2 billion hole is a huge hole. And, and clearly, our, our legislative leaders and our governor really showed their commitment to, um, our, to our K-12, our students, um, our staff, our teachers, you know, by really, um, um, making this. I mean, any cut is, is, is a bad cut, but it should, it could have been a lot, lot deeper. So we certainly would be remiss if I didn't, and actually, this is one of the things that President Raymond wanted me to express on her behalf, because she wouldn't be here today. Just really, really wanted to just express our deep sincere appreciation for keeping these cuts as far away from the classroom as they possibly could and minimizing them. So, thank you. And then, of course, thank you, um, Lindsey, for the hard work that you do down there, because that, that helps too, your, your stance and your, your voice, um, in those buildings. And that building in particular makes a difference, so thank you so much.
Of course, of course, I couldn't be in there this time, which was unusual experience for someone in my role. We modified. We have one more quick, um, conclusion slide, and then happy to take any questions. And so as you know, the next legislative session feels like it's just around the corner, um, six months away. In fact, there's a list of over 100 VDRs from legislature, legislators that have already been filed. And we know that state agencies will be submitting their budget requests, really, within, um, six, four to six weeks. So a lot of work going into the next legislative session happening already. And if that weren't enough, we know that the pupil-centered funding formula, uh, that is modifying the Nevada plan is scheduled in law right now to go live for the fiscal year of '22. And so that adds a component of uncertainty for our district and others. And I, we will be back in front of you in August, both meetings in August, discussing any ideas and moving forward on a potential build draft request on behalf of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees that's authorized in law. And, and as we understand what the additional costs of operating schools are in this COVID era, that's going to play a key factor in understanding what our budget needs or requests are going to be going into another legislative session, another fiscal year. So, uh, Madam Vice President, thank you for, uh, listening. So, Madam Vice President, thank you for listening to our presentation here and certainly happy to answer any questions.
Again, thank you to, to my colleagues. Any additional questions or, or comments for our esteemed group of three that did such an amazing job with, with our numbers, with our budget and, and with our legislative leaders? Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Okay, well, thank you very much to the three of you for such a great work down there. And, oh, I see, I, I'm sorry, I see trustee Cogill.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and thank you, Lindsay, Mark and Mike for presentation. Now that we're through this process and the state really used a lot of its reserves on balancing this budget, what is the feeling on the next biennium? I know it's early, but I'm sure that they're talking about it. Any word on what they're feeling about our state in the next two years?
Mark, do you want to go first?
No, I'll let you go first, Lindsay.
I mean, I, I, I think it's bleak. I think everyone is nervous about what's going to happen. I think everyone's closely watching every single month as we see tax revenue returns coming in. Economic Forum plays a key role with their meetings. I think they're coming, they have one in October. And certainly in December in setting what the legislature can do. But I think there is a lot of uncertainty and angst about what we're facing.
And I would agree with that. I think the, the states forecast some level of recovery from here. And I think as you've seen the trajectory of the COVID pandemic, you know, the longer that it goes on and the longer that stalls a recovery, that's not good news for the state or anyone else. On the other hand, hopefully, there will be additional assistance from Washington DC at some point to governments, especially school districts, to address all of the additional costs we face. So we'll see.
Then this is a follow-up. Is there any momentum with this uncertainty to potentially delay the new funding formula? Or is, or as it stands right now, our legislative leader is preset on they want to get that rolling right away?
Mark's a commissioner, he can speak for himself. I mean, the, the, the new, the pupil-centered funding plan is in law to go forward. So any change to that would have to be at an upcoming legislative session. I think it depends on the legislator that you speak to and which district they represent in terms of how they feel about that particular proposal. So I think there's uncertainty from Washoe in particular, but my sense is full steam ahead from the legislators representing the Clark County School District.
Yeah, I, I figured you were going to say that. Well, well, guess, we'll hope. But thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Cogill. I also see Superintendent McNeil and then after trustee Simon Holland.
Well, why don't you have trustee Simon Holland go in? And then I'll just finish up with the presentation to add my, my notes.
Okay, thank you, trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Vice President, and thank you superintendent for the courtesy. One of the things that's on our list in that Attachment C is gifted and talented. And I know we've had a lot of emails with concerns about our GT program. What do we know about that? Is that something we're planning to backfill with federal funding? Not sure who can answer that question best, but I, I do think we should have a bit about that on the record.
Mark, if you don't mind, I was just going to give a little bit of insight into how they came up with, what they came up with and what we heard after the fact. As part of the pupil-centered funding plan, the vendor advising that group, APA, recommended gifted and talented weight at 5%. And based on the math that it was done right now, the weight in Nevada is actually, I believe, 14%. And so the thought process from the legislators in the special session was reduce the funding or gate to the APA recommended amount. And that's how they came up with the dollar value of the cut for the gifted and talented program. In terms of what we're going to do, I'll leave that to, to Mark or Dr. McNeil.
Yeah, and again, this just came up on Friday, late Friday. But, I mean, I'll defer to Dr. McNeil. But I, the plan that we've discussed over the weekend is to restore funding for GT through federal CARES Act monies for fiscal year '21. And I'll, I'll pass it on to Dr. McNeil for any other comments.
No, thank you very much, Mark and Lindsay. And, and I just want to say kudos to your entire team. You know, when this, this was my first special session as, as a superintendent. And, you know, I felt very, very well-prepared with, with the testimony that, that we provided to the Assembly and to the Senate. I think we had some very good debates as superintendents across the state. But I can tell you that none of these decisions were, were easy for us. But the fact that, that our legislators and our governor supported our efforts as protecting the distributed school, school account, I think was, was huge for, for our state. As far as for GT, Mark's absolutely right. We had conversations late over the weekend as far as using the ESRS grant. And that's what Mark was referencing when we'll have that agenda item for next week on the board is that we're going to have to make some, already some revisions to that grant's application, because the GT was not something on our, on our radar. But we need to make sure that we have whole programming going into the 2021 school year. I will tell you that, you know, in discussing this with, with Lindsay, I think that we, as well as Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf, I think we will have to come back and have a discussion with the board as far as what future GT programming may, may look like if the funds are not somehow brought back to, to school districts around GT. Because that, that's a concern for us. But our priority was to place for 2021 that programming within our ESRS application.
Okay, thank you. So, so we can tell constituents, folks who are, are anxious about that, that it's our intent to, to keep that program whole at this point. And we're going to pursue funding to be able to do that right at this point. We don't have a guarantee that we're going to be able to do that, but that's our intention. Is that, is that an okay summary?
That is an okay, absolutely okay summary.
Okay. And, and I want to echo everyone's thanks for everyone that's working on all this. I know there's a lot that goes on at the legislative desk, but there's a whole lot that goes on behind the scenes with all of you, crunching numbers and, and trying to determine fiscal impacts and running spreadsheets and having conversations. So I know you were, you all were working around the clock and I just want to echo the comments that have been made, thanking everyone.
No, absolutely. And I appreciate very much too, the, the support of the board that if we needed to get a hold of a trustee at any particular time, I was on the phone to President Raymond several times over the weekend. And, and that really helps us out, having that, that open line conversation. And just a couple of other points too, for the pre-K, for the pre-kindergarten. I know that State Superintendent Ebert also put some budget line items within the governor's funding, federal funding to help supplement the loss of the pre-K funding. So we're hoping that, that we will have restoration of some of our pre-K dollars as well. And then we were noticed today that, that we should be meeting with the state superintendent tomorrow to have kind of a run-through as far as the absolute reductions. And then also more information on the $50 million of the federal funding so that we can get those funds to our school districts as soon as possible.
If I might, Madam Vice President, just one last question. We're bumping up to being just a few weeks out now. So I know it's going to be important for people to be able to plan as well as they can. Is there any, any guidance from the state about when we'll have that information to be able to make those decisions? For example, about pre-K? Because if we won't have those services available, there'll be a whole lot of people who need childcare.
I'm hoping that we will find out a lot more tomorrow with the meeting with the state superintendent. I mean, I, I, I think, and Lindsay and Mark can chime in. I know that, that several of the legislators put on the record that we needed to get those federal funds to districts as soon as possible.
Great, well, thank you. And I know you guys are doing your best. And we're kind of, we're, we're the tail that's being wagged by the dog, trying to find, you know, how we can make all this stuff happen. It's not for lack of planning on the part of the district. A whole lot of planning that's going on at the district level. But we, we can't control when some of those funds are released to us. So appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, trustee Simon Holland and Dr. McNeil. Did that cover your comments as well that you wanted to share?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you to Lindsay, Mark and Mike. Next time, don't talk so much. We really do appreciate all the work that you guys scramble. The moment's known us and, and, and help us get through this thing and position as well. So thank you so much. All right, next item on the agenda. Agenda item 4.02, discussion on possible action to suspend the Board Policy 9070 with regard to proposed revisions to Board Policy 5400, student attendance, more specifically, the requirement that a, that a board policy be approved by the Board Policy Committee prior to being considered by the Board of Trustees. I know it sounded like I spoke in circles, but that actually really will make sense. And it looks like we have Dr. Lapinta here in lieu of, in lieu of General Counsel Rambardo. I know he's tied up with our, with our president. Dr. Lapinta, thank you for being here.
Hey, and I believe Debbie Byersdorf is also.
Are you jumping the gun on my agenda item?
I'm sorry, I always thought this was the attendance one.
Oh, no, okay, okay. You didn't jump in, Neil, so I, I thought.
I'm so sorry.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yes. So, so Chief General Counsel Neil Rambardo, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I can hear no one else, though. Because I was hearing Angie a minute ago and now I'm.
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm talking now. Maybe jump out and jump back in?
Okay, well, I'm just going to take this in the dark. I'm presuming you can hear me. I cannot hear you, so I apologize for that. I was able to hear all the way until I was introduced. And for whatever reason, turning on my mic has somehow muted all of you and I apologize for that. Basically, as you know, 9070 is a board policy that requires that anytime we consider changing a board policy, we go to the Board Policy Committee. And in this instance, giving the, okay, oh, sorry, that chat threw me off. Anyway, in this instance, we, we need to, we need to suspend Board Policy 9070 so that we can consider the new attendance policy at 5400. Given everything going on, we need to look at that attendance policy. And that's what Dr. Lapinta is here for, as well as Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf on the next item 4.03. So really, we just need a motion to suspend 9070 so that we can move forward with making the changes to 5400. And again, I hope that makes sense and I'm sorry I can't hear you. So if you have questions, maybe Kristin can answer for me. I don't know. I don't know what to say.
Yeah, we, we are trying to fix the technical difficulties right now. But if any of the trustees have any questions, basically what it is, is we need to suspend this board policy so we could take, you, you all could take action on the next item.
Does that, any trustees have any questions? Yes, please, trustee Simon Holland.
No, no questions. I just want to reiterate what Neil has said, that this is, we are in difficult times and we need to change our process for changing these policies. So if there was no public comment on this one, I'm prepared to make the motion.
Well, let's ask at this point, any public comment on this? I hadn't seen any yet, JJ? Have you received?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Well, we'll receive your, your, your motion now, trustee Simon.
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice President. Moving that the Board of Trustees suspends Board Policy 9070 with regard to Board Policy 5400, which is the student attendance policy.
Now a second. I have a second from a, a motion, excuse me, from trustee Simon Holland. A second from trustee Kelly, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify so by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much, any opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Thank you very much. A Chief General Counsel jumped out to jump back in. And then now we will go on just again, that you can't suspend the attendance policy without suspending the requirement that all policy revisions go to the policy committee. Now that we've gotten that out of the way, we can consider the next agenda item, which is agenda item 4.03, discussion on possible action to provide preliminary approval to the proposed changes to Board Policy 5400, which is a student attendance policy specifically to remove the guiding practice that students shall not be absent more than 10% of school days to be promoted or passed, to add language that no student at the elementary or middle school level will be retained due, due to strictly, due strictly to attendance and to add language that no student at the high school level will fail a course due to, due strictly to attendance and to provide direction for the creation in compliance with state laws and regulations and procedures for students attending distance education, online courses and any other hybrid learning model. And to initiate the 13-day public review and comment period. And this is for possible action. And now we will hear from Dr. Bryn Lapinta and Deputy Superintendent Deborah Byersdorf.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I'm going to kick it off here. Thank you very much for having us today. Vice President Dr. Taylor, Superintendent Dr. McNeil and trustees. And I am joined by Dr. Bryn Lapinta, who is the Senior Director in our Student Accounting Department. Dr. Lapinta and I are bringing forward to you this afternoon three kind of overarching proposed edits to the current student attendance policy, Board Policy 5400. And as you see on the screen in front of you, thank you, JJ. I, I want to walk us through those, very quickly, those three kind of larger changes to the policy coming to you today in consideration of what school will look like when we go back to school here soon. So JJ, if you could scroll up, there have been some changes, trustees, to how the policy is organized. For example, moving some definitions up toward the beginning of the policy instead of at the, the, the back or the bottom of the policy. And then under that first heading there, the, the one that I'd like to really draw your attention to is, JJ, thank you, is number two, i- is one that I would like to point out to you, adding wording that our counselors and teachers and administrators, when they're working with students around attendance, that the schools will continue to work toward the academic, social and emotional growth of our students. And then JJ, if you could take it up a little bit more for me. And then, Dr. Taylor, as you met, as you just read previously, one of the larger changes is the addition of language that no student shall be retained at the elementary or middle school level due strictly to attendance. And then we did, we are proposing striking out language. You can see there that a student shall not be absent from school 10% or more of school days. On that particular recommendation for the deletion of that language is due to the fact that we will have students that are attending school in a full-distance model, a hybrid model or some other kind of online or virtual model as well and would not be in our school buildings potentially on a consistent basis. And then also adding language there, you'll see below that, that no student shall fail a course at the high school level due strictly to their attendance as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to point out to us on here?
Yeah, I, I think perhaps the other recommending, recommended changes may be kind of self-explanatory, just kind of cleaning up some language in there. So I think I'll stop there and if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Simon Holland.
Two questions, one very minor. So I had, I had suggested to JJ, for the good of the order, that in that small six where it says attendance procedures for students attending distance education, if you read that with the upper, if you can scroll back up to what. if you read that with the upper, if you can scroll back up to what it's talking about at the list, the list says the superintendent shall cause to be created in compliance with state laws and regulations procedures for. And then in six, it says, it says attendance procedures for. So I thought, you know, just as a cleanup, we would just start with students attending distance education, online courses, et cetera, just a, you know, better syntax. But on a larger substantive piece, and I am totally supportive of our introducing this important change to the policy, I would like Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf to talk a little bit about how we do encourage attendance, because I know that was a subject we heard about from parents during distance learning in the springtime. We heard from some parents that they felt like the kids were not incentivized to work hard. So let's talk a little bit about that on the record so that people know how we will make sure that kids are still motivated to be fully engaged and to be participating and attending.
Absolutely, and, and thank you, trustee Simon Holland. And I'm gonna invite Dr. Lapinta to, to join in on the conversation as well. So Dr. Lapinta and I have been meeting closely with several groups of principals, teacher groups as well, talking about what attendance will look like heading into the twenty 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 one school year and how we partner with the Nevada Department of Education, ensuring that we are following appropriate statute in, in expecting our students to be attending school, but what that looks like in a hybrid model, for example, as we're moving forward with our middle and high schools, or students that are, as I said earlier, at home in a full distance learning model, well, that will, what that will look like as well. So when we went to, when our buildings, our schools closed back in March, Dr. Lapinta and her team worked very closely with the Nevada Department of Education to come up with a system to, to monitor the attendance of, of students. Those closures happened very quickly, and we were all learning how to do this distance learning in a very, very fast pace. We've, we've had time as we head into the next school year to be, I would say, perhaps more, more thoughtful and more thorough in the plans that we're putting together to help give our, our schools and our teachers, and then working with our families as well, as well around guidance for attendance and what it will look like in checking in with students to ensure that if they are working at home, that they are engaged in their learning, they're working closely with their, their teachers, et cetera. And we're kind of also excited, I think Bryn can talk to this as well, about some changes in our student attendance system, Infinite Campus, that, that we think will help, help us be, again, more thorough in how we take attendance, how we ensure that our students are staying engaged when they're, when they're learning from home. So Bryn, would you, would you jump in maybe with some updates about that work?
Sure. Mary Martini, the Systems Analyst for Infinite Campus, and I had an opportunity to see a demonstration from Infinite Campus about a month ago, and they're calling it blended learning. But it's really a module that helps with hybrid learning. Their students, not only does it divide the whole entire district up into household groups so that we keep families together on A days or B days, which is a, a very large undertaking if it had to be school by school because, you know, kids are in other schools. So it does that for the groups. It also makes it easier to take attendance because it, the, on, when you look at a given day, you'll see what students are in-person learning in your attendance module and what students are in distance learning so that you'll know. Additionally, talking to the teaching and learning group, we talked about taking attendance. The law in Nevada is that attendance has to be taken weekly for distance, distance learning and also for hybrid learning, or the rules, I guess I should say. And we decided, talking to that group, that in order to keep students engaged, we need to take attendance on a daily basis. Because then every day will matter. And for distance learning, the distance learning portion, of course, if you're in person, you're either there or you're not. But for the distance learning portion, it's about turning in an assignment, making progress in a course. It, it's all, it ticks the boxes of all the things that will make students engaged. And the folks that we talked to, we started with the teaching and learning group and then moved to the middle school and high school principal group because they're really the ones with the hybrid model, and they were all, seemed to really like what we were talking about.
Well, that's great. Thank you. And thanks, thanks for the specifics because it, it helps us to be able to share that with people who ask us those questions. So really appreciate that and, and appreciate the thoughtfulness that's gone into it. Again, you know, great, great planning. So thank you.
I also wanted to talk, touch a little bit on appeals. You'll see in five, three, that the appeals have been struck from there. If you're not, if no student fails due to attendance for a course, there's no reason to do appeals. And high schools spend a large amount of time doing them. So again, we took that to the teaching learning group and then to the middle school and high school principals and talked to them about removing the appeals altogether. And there, there's really no point in doing appeals if no one can fail due to attendance. So that's been removed, and it'll be a huge time saver for both middle and high school.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you for asking that question, trustee Simon Holland, because I know all of us got that same kind of feedback. What's gonna make kids go? They get uninterested. There's nothing to incentivize them. And that daily, daily attendance, well, I guess will be, as my pastor would say, will be some encouragement, if you will, for, for students to be more engaged.
And it also kicks in support. You know, there's supports that we have when students aren't, aren't there, not just from the teacher, but from lots of places. So I think it'll help a lot.
Yeah, and, and perhaps if I could add to Vice President Taylor, when we have put together our plans for those five additional days of professional learning that we, that we brought to the trustees earlier in July, one of the professional learning requirements will be our school-based staff understanding those changes to Infinite Campus so, so they can be able to use a program. But it's going to be a good change, and it's going to make things easier for, for our staff as well, to ensure that they're quickly able to, quickly able to monitor attendance and then quick, more quickly able to work with students who may not be engaged if they're learning at home.
Good. And I think anything we can do during, during this time to make things a little easier for the staff out there that's doing so much is a good thing. And it provides, and it supports for, for students as well. Fantastic. Before I ask for a public comment, any other comments or questions from the trustees? No trustee, call you. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. It's a quick question on how students will be graded then. So basically, what we're saying is a student won't fail or be held back solely based on attendance. So their grade will be based on the work that they're doing. So if we have a student that doesn't do any of the work, are we saying that that student, the teacher can still fail that student? Are we saying student can't be failed?
Well, that, well, with, with the trustee cut all the changes to this attendance policy are strictly a student would not be failed due to attendance. If a student is attending school, attendance is being taken and they're learning from home, or they're actually in the school building and they're choosing to do nothing, or, and, and believe me, before a child would be failed, the school would be doing everything they could, working with families, working with the child, providing interventions, follow-up, et cetera, but still chooses to do nothing, then they would be at risk of not passing the course or at risk of not being promoted to the next grade level, being retained.
Okay, so what this policy is doing is protecting that high school student. Let's say that based on all the work that she did, she got an eighty-six percent, but due to whatever reason, missed twenty percent, she could still earn that B, for example, versus not having an automatic fail solely based on attendance.
Yes, correct. She met the requirements of the course, showed proficiency in the course, could be a student too, who has been excluded from school. We're just wanting to be very careful with the, the different learning models that may be in place next school year, that attendance by itself is not a reason, lack of attendance by itself is not a reason why a student would fail a course or not be promoted to the next grade level.
Okay, yeah, that, this is, this is very appropriate right now. Schools have spent so much time trying to figure out where everybody is, what everyone's situation is with everything that's going on, and that would be almost impossible, and especially at the high school level. So this, this all, this all looks good to me. One last question I had, I apologize if I missed this. We're updating this policy officially, but are these changes only intended for COVID situation we're in? And once that is hopefully, you know, done soon, then we're gonna change it back to what it was before? Or is this like a permanent change going forward?
That trustee cuddle, that's a very good question. I, there are other changes, in my opinion, in our recommendation to, to, to the trustees that I think are warranted in the attendance policy. So going back to the current attendance policy as it sits right now, I would not think so. I wouldn't believe that we would do that. But I think going forward, and I, and I, and whenever that timeline may be, when, when, when we are back to perhaps more normal times, it likely would need a revisit in the circumstances that are happening then. And, and again, in my opinion, the attendance policy is one that should be continually reviewed and, and looked at. And then the supporting, the guiding documents that would come along with this, as we need to work with our teachers and our principals to make changes, given circumstances that we, we might be in in the future.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues before we go to public comments? Okay, we don't see any. JJ, public comment on this item?
We received public comments from Kathleen Craft and Jessica Gregory.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, having received all of the public comment and seeing no other questions, I'll entertain the motion at this time. It's just a pleasure of, of my colleagues.
I'll make that motion, Madam Vice President. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revisions to board policy five four zero zero student attendance and initiates the thirteen day public review and comment period.
Second. Thank you very much. A motion by trustee Simon Holland, second by trustee Manetto. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposition? Okay, hearing none, the motion is carried. Thank you, everybody. And thank you so much. Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf has to get used to that. Love. Byersdorf and Dr. Lapinta, thank you for your work on this. This is really important for families and I think for students in the, in the situation that we're in. And it, it takes that one thing, something else off of their plate to worry about and still give students a chance to be, to be measured and evaluated based upon their work. So thank you. You're really important. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Now we have any board reports at this time? Yes, trustee Simon Holland, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just quickly wanted to acknowledge the great virtual forum last night. I think you were also in attendance to, to look at the educational specifications for the new Debbie Smith Career and Technical Education Academy. And I, I was really impressed with the planning that is being done and just wanted to share with other trustees that one of the leaders on the consulting team that's working with us and developing those ed specs is actually, her name is Amy Yurko, and she is the International School Planner of the Year for the entire world. And we are so fortunate to have her helping us look at some of those plans for the Debbie Smith CTE Academy. So, and kudos to the staff and also to our business and community partners who took time to participate and to help prepare the presentation and help inform us about what the career and workforce needs are that our students can benefit from at that academy. So I just wanted to, kudos to everybody involved. Tammy Zimmerman did a great job. Whole team was wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Simon Holland. Clerk, call you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to give kudos to Superintendent McNeil and staff for the work's been done all summer. I think one thing that I've noticed specifically is the active role that Washoe has taken as an, as a K-12 leader in Nevada. And it, it's good for our state when Washoe is a vocal leader rather than an absent follower, which has happened in the past. And so I do want to give that recognition out, and I think it's good for all of our counties in Nevada when, when the second largest school district in the state is active in a leadership role with NDE and, and the, the state government. So I definitely appreciate that for sure. So thank you to Dr. McNeil and, and staff.
Thank you, clerk. Call you. Nice job. Nice, nice job to the team. I mean, these are some crazy times and no one could anticipate it, but I really have to just continue to be proud of the way the team is, is, is hosting, is, do we get, is a managing, is, do we get everything right all the time? None of us do as a board, as a team, but gosh, I mean, the work that's being done, the effort that's out there, the, the opportunities for people to voice their concerns and ask their questions and, and even the responsiveness. I mean, I've been really proud of, of all of our colleagues. As we've been emailed, a lot, a lot of public comment to keep up with. We, you know, we all watched the things going back and forth, and people are really making the big effort to get back to people and try to answer questions. And that's the best we can do. I mean, it's crazy times. We don't, still don't have all the answers and probably won't because they aren't really out there. But everybody's working really hard to get there. So it's, it makes me proud to be a part of. Other, other board reports, I, I do have one. I had a great call today with, with Katie from Duncan, from Duncan Elementary School and our area superintendent Gina reached out. I had a nonprofit organization out of Southern Nevada that wants to expand into Northern Nevada. They do a big backpack giveaways. And they've done them for several years in Clark County, and they, they're doing four in Clark this year and one in Northern Nevada. And so we are really excited over at Trainer Duncan, if you will. Great neighborhood that, you know, we know there, those are both title schools, and those, those families can certainly use the additional help and even working in collaboration with the sheriffs, the sheriff's office, because they do their Christmas in July giveaway the week before. And it's just gonna be exciting times. Gonna have six to seven hundred backpacks to give away out there and big team of volunteers to be there just to, every little thing, and then try, try to pull in bags or boxes of food as they pick up a backpack and, and so on, and just working really hard, of course, to do it all safely. But it's just exciting. And the, the, thank you, Dr. McNeil, you threw this, got the staff right on it when I reached out to you. So we had a great Zoom call today, and it's moving forward. So, so look forward. You know, I don't like you guys to be surprised when things are happening. It's just really cool to be able to do something to help families because, as you know now, you can't share school supplies. Kids can't, like you used to be able to go to school and get some supplies. And so it's even more important for any of those efforts that we can be involved in as a district or even community efforts and so on, to help those families that might need a little extra help to get those supplies. So, so I'm very excited. Again, thank you, Dr. McNeil. Very excited, and so is Katie Weir, and be looking for it. Be looking for it. Anything else from the board? Okay, Dr. McNeil, you've been sitting around with nothing to do.
Absolutely. Just been sitting in my office eating bonbons and, you know.
No, thank you very much, Vice President Taylors and trustees. I just wanted to let our staff know, you know, this was, we had sent out a survey last week to our certified staff, and we've gotten a lot of questions, you know, when, when are the rest of our employees going to be surveyed? And we will be getting those surveys out this week or, or early next week. This was our first time gathering that type of data, and we wanted to make sure that we had an opportune time to make sure that we looked at that and received the feedback. And this was really in regards to how we're gonna be setting up our distance learning model as far as, you know, within each school and then also on a, on a broader basis. But just to let our employees know that we will be following up with our other employee groups for this, for a similar type of survey as well. And then I'm looking very forward to having a very collaborative, important discussion with our, with our partners over at the Washoe County Health District tomorrow, Mr. Kevin Dick and his team. Epidemiology team will be on there and, and, and I'll have some key staff members on, on the call with me. And I just really want to thank the Washoe County Health District for being so responsive to our questions. And, and we know that many of our employee groups have questions, which I'll be submitting to the Health District tonight and that they are on board and trying.
and that they are on board and trying to help us answer the questions as quickly as possible. So just a shout out to the Washoe County Health District. And then finally, Vice President Taylor and I, and, and our superstar Nutrition Services Director Leanka Solis, yesterday had a great conversation with the Junior League. The Junior League approached Vice President Taylor wanting to do something. They weren't quite sure what they wanted to do. So we thought about some of our food security issues, and, and making sure that our, that our kids had the necessary nourishment that they needed during a school day. And so the Junior League has stepped up to the plate, and we're gonna see what they're, what they're going to be able to do with a telethon. But just thank you to Vice President Taylor for doing that outreach, and then obviously to the Junior League for stepping up to the plate. And that's really all I have for right now.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, a couple of occasions when people have reached out and just wanting to help, just wanting to help. So that's, it's always, always fantastic, and the staff is always outstanding about jumping in and saying, yes, we could use the help, and, and, and how can, how can, can we be of assistance? Just before we get to our final couple of agenda items, just want to remind people, if you have a public comment, as you know, due to the, the pandemic and the governor's directive zero to one, we cannot meet in person, but we do still want to hear your public comments. So if you have one that is not related to a particular agenda item, please send it to publiccomment@washoeschools.net, publiccomment@washoeschools.net. And throughout the meeting, you see it's kind of half looking over, and we are, we're always following those public comments. And those comments will be made a part of the, the, our record for the meeting. And we'll also make sure we read your name, so that those, you know that those public comments were received. Future agenda, agenda items for anyone, before we go to our last opportunity for public comments of future agenda items? Okay, all right, seeing none. Last call, public comments. JJ, we have anything?
We received comments from Empower Nevada Teachers, Amy DeWitt Smith, Natalie Geisels, Heather Smith, Wanda Lopshire, Laura Duffin, Sarah Williams, Laura Fortumoto, Joshua Colbet, Catherine Cook, Brandon and David O'Grady, and Demerta Guernsey. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, JJ. And again, as JJ responds, we get, we get those copies, so we can read those public comments, and they will be in the minutes for the record. Okay, our next meeting, as you all know, next Tuesday, 2:00 PM, next to, I believe we're still 2:00 PM next Tuesday? Yes, 2:00 PM, one of our final times at 2:00 PM, and then soon, before school starts, we'll be back in person. Again, just want to remind people, I know there are a lot of questions and comments regarding the reopening of school, and how staff feels about it, and so on. We were not, again, ignoring those comments and concerns. It was not on the agenda for today. So we're unable to approach those, to, to, to talk about those. But that is why we have one more meeting this month. So we can talk about that in the final way, to get prepared in our 21-day notice, 20-day notice before school starts. So tune in and continue to share your thoughts, and know you will. One last word from President Raymond. She just finished her meeting and is just getting home, so I'll tell her we don't need her anyway, because we're almost done. And make a note, her last meeting lasted 10 hours. Mine lasted one hour and 14 minutes. Just saying. All right, everybody. Thank you so much. The meeting is adjourned, and we'll see you next week.
Bye, everyone. Good night.